I'd like to call to order the March 3 special meeting of the Farver School Committee. Deb, would you please call the hall?
Mr. Agia.
Yeah.
Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Dias.
Here.
Mr. Corey.
Here.
Ms. Larve.
Here.
Ms. Pereira. Mary Coogan.
Here. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Citizens input. We have one speaker tonight, Rachel Martin, Oak Street Swansea. Three minutes, please, Rachel. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the school committee, decision makers, and members of the community. My name is Rachel Martin, and I am here representing the special education pre-K teachers, paraprofessionals, and service providers who have been working at the Early Learning Centers located at 300 Northeastern Avenue and Bishop Connolly. As you consider the budget tonight, we hope that it includes adequate funding for early childhood programming. We urge you to remember that early childhood education is not just an expense, it's an investment in the future success of the city's children. The first five years of life are the most critical for brain development. Ninety percent of brain development happens in those first five years. Children's earliest experiences shape their ability to learn, solve problems, and build relationships. When young children have access to high-quality early learning, they enter kindergarten ready to learn, ready to succeed, and on track for academic achievement. The research is clear. Students who attend high-quality early childhood education programs are more likely to meet grade-level expectations, graduate from high school, and pursue higher education. Children who attend quality pre-K programs are more than twice as likely to be ready for kindergarten than those who are not. Students with a strong early education foundation are 29% more likely to graduate from high school, and students who attended high-quality early childhood programs score higher in reading and math by third grade than their peers who did not. Early childhood education creates confident, capable learners. It fosters curiosity, critical thinking, and social-emotional skills that help children navigate challenges. By investing in strong early learning programs, we are building the foundation for a generation of students who are prepared for school, ready to graduate, and equipped for lifelong success. But high-quality education requires a high-quality space. Just as we built the new Durfee High School as a symbol of excellence, let's give our youngest learners a facility that our city can be proud of. A state-of-the-art, early childhood building that includes safe, accessible classrooms, outdoor play areas that are accessible for all students with varying physical abilities, sensory-friendly spaces including a dedicated sensory hallway or room to provide students with needed breaks, separate therapy spaces free from distractions where speech, physical, and occupational therapy can be provided, and facilities designed for our messiest little learners. Baby wipes are expensive for teachers to supply, and they are not efficient or sufficient. We need classroom sinks for good hygiene and cleanup. You have been talking about building this facility for a few years now. Please make the commitment today to fully fund early childhood education and build a facility that sets the standard for excellence. The future of Fall River and its next generation of Durfee graduates depends on it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Item number two.
Chairman.
Mr. Agia.
Can we just get a response to some of those comments from the superintendent?
In terms of the current budget for...
General.
Sure.
Well, because it's a budget meeting, so the comments had to be related to the budget.
Yep.
So I'm just... She brings valid questions, I think we all know, but if we can give an update, I would appreciate it.
So I will say that in relation to the capital improvements necessary, the planned capital improvements for the Pace Center are not... That money is not built into this Fall River Public Schools budget for the coming year. So I'm not sure if there's... I think people are aware of the fact that we are moving or we're looking to move our program out of the Early Learning Center that is at the Eastern Avenue site so that we can have... So that for one year, we will be able to house all of those programs at one site over at Connolly. And then, moving forward from that, we're looking to plan ahead for an Early Learning Center at the Pace Building, but it's not scheduled for this coming year.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Agia.
So I've long advocated for something different. I advocated for the Pace Center. I think what happened is, and just to be fully transparent with the public, we were promised things in March at the Spencer-Borden School Subcommittee on Early Childhood that we were going to be able to move into the Pace Center September of 2025. Subsequent to that, all those plans got thrown out because, in order to do that, we had to do certain things and work with the city to fix the roof and to do the fire suppression at the auditorium. Because those things didn't happen, and I... There's a lot of blame to go around, but those things didn't happen, we therefore, one, we couldn't do it because we didn't have the time; two, subsequent to a different meeting that we had, we spent the money that was supposed to be for the Pace Center on other things, including an overage of $700,000 for a playground. So basically, the answer to the question is, no, we're not going to move in in September as we were promised. We're going to postpone that for a full year. But we still... This is a budget meeting. We still need budget money in this particular budget in order to do that job for next September because this is the budget that starts July 1. So I want you to hear... Everybody to hear it clearly that the superintendent just stated, we do not have the money in the current budget, which is why we're here, to build the Pace Center in September. That, to me, is quite troublesome. And the current one at Northeastern Avenue is losing $600,000 every year that we have it. We've already gone over that, too. So I agree with the superintendent, we need to move out of there because it's clearly losing money, but I'm disheartened to hear superintendent say that there's no money in this particular budget for what this young lady just mentioned. We've got to get real, folks, in my opinion. I yield.
Mr. Corey.
Rachel, in response to your comments, I just want to let you know that we have a strong sense of direction for early childhood. The entire school board has a deep support in that direction. Sometimes, things get jumbled up in the facilities and in the operation of our school department, and certain things come up that you don't plan for, but I could assure you that the greater development for early childhood is definitely in our near future. And if it was... It was supposed to try to be opened up by September, and even though we're going to have a delay, I just want to assure you and the public that our direction is moving completely in that direction. And some of the improvements made to the Pace Center are very, very... They're really wonderful to see. So that alone is proof that we're moving strongly in that direction. So I'm asking you and your staff and everybody that's really plugging for this, you know, to try to be patient and work with us. We're not losing sight of the goal ahead of us with that, I yield.
Mr. Dias.
Thank you. So a few things. One, Ms. Martin, as the legislative liaison of the committee, I'm trying to... For our next meeting next week, I'm attempting to have some bills that have been introduced to the state legislator before this committee, so this committee can potentially endorse them. And one of them is an MSBA bill for pre-K, for expenditures, like building expenditures for pre-K, which would hopefully help with some of the concerns we're bringing up today. And hopefully, with this committee's endorsement and, you know, being a strong advocate, it's something we can push for. Going to piggyback off of Mr. Agia's questions, the Pace Center, how much is that to fix the roof? Do we have a number on that?
The roof's already fixed. Roof's done.
So just remind me, what's the issue again of moving in to the Pace Center?
The Pace Center needs fire suppression. That proposal should be going out to bid within the next week or two. We'll do that first, and then we'll start looking at the plans to subdivide that one big wing into classrooms. It got delayed for a number of reasons, but we're going in the right direction, and I'm sure we'll get it done, hopefully, to start classes over there. We did extend with Connolly for a year, so no kids are going to be losing their spots. And just as we did with 2501 South Main Street, it might seem like it moves quickly, but I'm confident we'll get it done.
Okay, so is the administration's... That's where I got confused. So is the administration's plan to eventually move all just pre-K into the Pace Center?
Not all. Not all. Sorry, not all. Not all, Colin.
Okay. And just last question, how much do we pay Connolly per year for the lease?
I'll have to call you back. Sorry.
I'm not positive. I mean, I can ask Mr.?
It's $110,000 for 10 months.
A year?
Yes.
So, and it's a three-year lease?
We had a one-year lease.
Per year?
One-to-one. Yep.
Okay. I yield.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Agia.
Just a comment on what was just stated. So I haven't seen anything, and maybe other committee members have. May I just say that we re-upped with Connolly for twice the space? Haven't heard that yet.
What? What? I'm sorry, I didn't hear, Captain.
You had just mentioned that we re-upped with Connolly for additional space to get them out of the other room.
No, no, no. We re-upped with Connolly for an additional year. Next year, we're going to be in Connolly again.
Right, but we don't have... I don't believe we've seen anything on any of that.
That's coming before the committee.
Because as you pointed out...
For facilities, subcommittee? Before it comes to the full committee?
Yeah.
Sure, I'm just saying, I haven't heard that yet.
No, it's just a plan.
So the piece of moving from wherever to Connolly, I think, is its second best. The best plan was the one that we created back in March. And at that time, it was time-sensitive to make sure that the roof was done and then fire suppression was done, so that would give us time to do it. But I can't stress enough that there's multiple pieces to the failure here. It wasn't just that that wasn't done. Sure, they should have... We should have, on the school side, advocated with the city to make sure it was done on time. That's one. The second one, though, which is a budget issue, was we overspent the budget and we don't have the money in order to do it. So if somebody can tell me where, in this budget, in FY '26 budget, where the actual money is going to come from to do that project, please do so, or at least be ready to do it when it comes time. Because if we said we... The young lady was courageous, came up and said things I think I agree with, but what she asked you was to try to say, where's the money? We need all these things, and we don't have it in the budget. So if somebody... If I'm misspeaking, please let me know, or just during the budget process, come up with, how are we going to fund it? I just heard the mayor say that we don't even have fire suppression out to bid yet.
Yeah, it's going out.
In case anybody is wondering, it's already March. That was promised to us that it was going to be done in September. So just keep your eyes open and try to ask some questions. It's not just that we support early childhood and things happen, as some colleagues want to say. It's more... It's complicated than that. So let's focus on it, and let's not just be rah-rah, everything's wonderful. In this particular situation, it wasn't wonderful. It was mishandled, and it shouldn't have happened. Thank you, I yield.
Okay. Next item up on the agenda is 3.1, Presentation Discussion for the Proposed Fiscal Year 2026 Annual Budget of the Farver Schools, as presented by Dr. Tracy Curly, Superintendent Schools. We're going to go down to the front row because there's an audio visual presentation.
Quick question on that. So we're going to be able to ask questions afterwards up on stage? It's presentation and discussion, right? So?
We'll come back up here.
Okay.
Started, okay. So this evening, we're just... We're going to offer an overview of our budget, including kind of these unequal parts of discussing the budget process, the funding formula, and then what the local planning and proposed budget consist of. So we are going to start with the budget process itself, and specifically, the local and state budget process timelines. So this slide just offers an overview of the budget process timelines here in Fall River, as well as at the state level. So along the bottom, you can see that we started, you know, following stakeholder surveys. We put together a... Our priorities for approval over December, January. We met with our school and departmental leads over the course of a couple months. We're here tonight with the proposed budget presentation and discussion, and then we'll be holding subsequent meetings, including that public hearing in April, and a submission to the... A school committee adopted budget to the mayor, which will go before City Council with approval in June. And then, running parallel to that, you can see along the top is the state timeline process, beginning with the governor's budget that became available in January. So I share this slide here. A budget is not just a collection of numbers, but an expression of our values and aspirations because it's really the statement to which we aspire throughout the entire process. And I also wanted to share it because I think it speaks to where we are in terms of our We talk about the annual budget, you know, in terms of it being a representation beyond the numbers, beyond the spreadsheets that are in the budget binder. As you all and we will all experience, the budget isn't just the spreadsheet with figures. And while the approved budget will be posted in a static PDF form on our website, we know that the budget in practice truly is a living document. It's a planning tool that provides a roadmap for resource allocation. It's a complement to district planning and goal setting, and while it guides us, the budget is also expected to be fluid in its requirement to adapt to changes in the district over the course of the year. So as enrollment changes, as funding streams are altered, we may need to make adjustments along the way, even in terms of the... An approved budget. So as we consider the value of transparency with our stakeholders, we want to, you know, state that the budget is also a communication vehicle, and it makes public our available resources and how our spending aligns with district priorities. And then, finally, the budget... Our budget uses really a look-back approach so that we can acknowledge the work ahead. We account for expected challenges while we're planning and as we move forward, and we fund those anticipated needs accordingly. So approved back, I think maybe first read December, approved in January, are the school year '26 budget priorities. And, you know, they're listed here with some bulleted items relating to each of those, but just wanted to highlight the human resources, our core instruction, student support, special education, multilingual education, our facilities and operations, instructional technology in college and career are a focus for... Are all, you know, equally... Not equal, but they're all focal points for us, and you'll see that in terms of all of our budgeted items. So Kevin Almeida, our CFO, is going to offer some insight into the funding formula by which we arrive at the foundation budget.
So the Student Opportunity Act came into law in 2019, and it provides a major infusion of money into the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It updates the law that was established, net reform, in 1993, which codifies the minimum level of spending for each school district. And specifically, the SOA addresses the low-income students, the special ed students, English-language learners, and providing things like SEL services and employee health insurance costs. And what the SOA did was just update the figures for prior funding that was not in place previously. And it infused the money over a six-year cycle. And this year, we're in... Actually, we're in year... We're in year five. Next year will be year six, and the last year of the SOA funding cycle. So net school spending. Required net school spending is often referred to as the foundation budget. It's the dollar amount that's set by the state that is the minimum amount that's spent on it for a district towards education. That along... Chapter 70, along with the required load contribution, is what makes up net school spending or the foundation budget. Hundred percent of legally required net school spending is the minimum level that must be spent per Chapter 70 of Mass General Law. Actual net school spending is what is actually reported when the end-of-the-year report is filed. The end-of-the-year report's filed in the fall into winter of the year, and the state will typically... They'll certify the report typically right before February vacation. And in actual net school spending, it's the actual amount of what's happened. And so oftentimes, what does happen is the amount that's spent is typically either more or less, depending on what happens with the other costs that sit outside our budget. And those costs specifically are in the indirect cost agreement, and they're costs such as insurance, retirement, and the administrative cost. And the... In net school spending, it includes the operating expenditures in our budget. So our foundation budget guiding principles, so every school district should have an adequate level of school funding based on the size and the needs of the students. Local communities should contribute to their schools according to their ability to raise tax revenue based upon local property values and income levels. And the state should provide enough funding to fill the gap between inadequate baseline funding level, the foundation budget, and the ability for the local community to contribute towards it. So this essentially is the breakdown of the state aid and local contribution across the state. So it's actually a 59-41 split. When the statewide budget is determined, it's 59% local contribution, 41% state aid. And this is statewide, so this is not specific to us. But the total statewide foundation budget is $15.3 billion, of which the split is $9 billion for the local contribution and $7 billion for state aid. So these are the components of the budget.
So aligned with the guiding principles that Mr. Almeida referenced, this slide really captures in a formulaic way those guiding principles. Number one, that the state determines a minimum amount to be spent on education. That's the foundation budget. The city contributes what it can as determined by the state. That's the required local contribution. And then, the state aid makes up the difference. So they're just making up what's left over. So it's really important to recognize that the state aid figure, that Chapter 78 money, is a resulting figure. It's the result of finding the difference between what's required and what the city can afford to pay. And there are six factors that actually contribute to what ultimately means that Chapter 78. Impacting the foundation budget, our enrollment, the wage adjustment factor and inflation, and then impacting that required local contribution are things like property values, income, and municipal revenue growth factor. So as part of the presentation, we're really going to focus quite a bit on the enrollment because it really is the cornerstone of the funding for us. It's a base factor. There's a base factor for all students, and then there are some incremental adjustments that are made for some student groups. And so we're going to take a look at the impact of enrollment on that foundation budget. So this first piece here around base funding, it's really baseline funding that's attached to every student in the district, and you can see that there are going to be differing amounts assigned to elementary students, our middle-school students, and then high-school students. And then, also, in terms of base funding, on the next slide, are the different amounts that are assigned for students who are enrolled in vocational programs in our preschool and then in our kindergarten, full-day programs. The incremental funding above the base is impactful in terms of the... Our English learner enrollment, our low-income enrollment, and then we'll see on some of the following slides, our special ed enrollment. So if you take a... If you move to the next slide, yep. So this... For special education, we work off figures on an assumed enrollment. And so there is a 1% assumed enrollment for students who are tuitioned out of a district, so that's kind of over and above our per-pupil amount. There's a 3.97% assumed enrollment in a district that... And that's not in counting the vocational or preschool numbers, but then, we also... We also consider... They also consider a 4.97 assumed enrollment of a district's vocational program in terms of special education.
So specifically here, we want to highlight the low income. So when the Student Opportunity Act was enacted, it went back to the 185% of the federal poverty level, up from the 133% threshold that they had in place. Statewide enrollment for low income at this moment in FY '26 is about 420,000 students compared to last year of 416,000 students, so a 4,000 growth. And these, in below, you'll see where and how the students are identified and the varying methods on how they're identified. So here are the foundation... These are the base rates, so these are the different categories for low income. And so a student that is low income with the base rates that we talked about previously averages about $18,685 in category 12, for which that is where we are categorized right now. As you can see the differences here in all the categories. So these here, these are the components to the foundation formula. Each component has an assigned value to each one of them. As you can see, the base rates, the base formulas are the top ones through the vocational programming, and then the incremental rates that we just discussed go down from the special ed in district down through the low-income category 12. And so when we were talking about the $18,000 on this slide, that takes into account low-income category 12, which is about just under $10,000 a student, with an average of the base rates at the top, which would average around nine... About $9,000 or so. So that's what was referenced previously. This here is the foundation... Our foundation categories, which I'll show you the foundation budget, you know, I'll show you the whole thing in the next slide. This shows you how the enrollment has changed over the three years in each one of the categories. And so you can see, essentially, in every category, we've pretty much increased with the enrollment in each category. This here is our foundation budget. So these are all the categories that we just discussed. There are 13 categories, as you can see, across the top. The base rates sit from 1 through 7 on the top there, from preschool to vocational, which were the rates we showed previously. And then, the incremental costs above and beyond from 8, 13 on the top. And then, with all these components, our foundation budget is just under $274 million. 273, 966, 514. And the average per pupil is $20,904 per student. This is the actual five-year trend for the last five years. The bottom portion is the required local contribution. The difference, or what makes up the rest, the rest of the blue, is the state aid. And then, the top figure from the $179 million over to the $273 million is the foundation budget and what it's been for the past five years. You can see the growth through the Student Opportunity Act and what's happened. So this is... So this here... Is this... Yeah. I'll be amazed, fine. So this is our foundation enrollment and net school spending. These are... This is a comparison of the last two years. As you can see, our enrollment has increased by 673 students. Now, our enrollment is just over 400 here in the Fall River Public Schools, but if you remember, the foundation enrollment is made up of the charter schools as well. So we're just a pass-through that goes through the charter schools. So that's... So that's the rest of the 673. The... So as you can see here, net school spending has gone from 243 million this past year to 273... Almost 274 million this year, a 13% increase from one year to the next. This is House 1. So Chapter 78 is 230,788, 276, an increase of about $28.5 million over last year. The city contribution is $43.00. The city contribution is 43 point nearly 2 million, an increase of just under 2 and a half million dollars. And it's increased in one year. The, the chapter 70 plus the city, city contribution is almost 274 million, nearly a $31 million increase over the previous year. So here's our proposed budget. So our current FY '25 spending level, when you bring in all the costs from the city and the school, are just on, in FY '25 are about $247 million. The budget being presented to you tonight is, is what net school spending is, which is the 273 million, 966, 514. The delta between the two numbers is about $27 million. And we are right at net school spending. So the indirect costs or the shared cost agreement that we have, it outlines the costs that are charged off to the schools on the city side. And it essentially, essentially outlines just the method and all the, in everything we do here and what costs get charged off. And it's referred to as the Schedule 19 charges. And so the, and so the charges that essentially outlines in the agreement that sit outside the, sit outside our budget are costs associated with insurance, costs associated with the retirement, the Fall River retirement system, the costs associated with the charter schools and school choice, and the administrative costs with the city. So those are the, those are, all those, and those costs are outlined in the indirect cost agreement and are referred to as indirect costs to the school department.
So this is our foundation budget. It is the number that represents 100% of net school spending for the next school year. And we thought certainly that this figure in its enormity is really worthy of its own slide, right? The weight of the number really is not lost on me or anyone on my team. And we feel that we're bringing forth a budget today that acknowledges our responsibility in spending in a way that's reflective of the needs of our students. So, you know, just in terms of recalling the priorities, as I said earlier in the presentation, and as we, you know, finish it up here this evening, and you're going to look, you're going to peruse over the documents over the next couple of weeks in preparation for some of our discussions, I feel confident that you'll see that the result, it's, it really is the result of a process that acknowledges and really celebrates all of our priorities. You will definitely see that alignment. So we're going to take a look now at the, what our local planning process looked like in the budget that we are proposing. So following the establishment of the priorities in late winter, the principals and departmental leads were given some parameters for building their budgets. It wasn't an exercise in zero-based budgeting, but it was a framework that we used for developing either the school or departmental budget rationales. We were asked them to offer a rationale, examine the individual, you know, school or departmental context, reflect on what progress or impact the existing structures has, has had, had, had to date, and then finally take a look at some strategic plans for strategic allocation or reallocation of resources, either, you know, within a current framework or structure or in terms of building new structures. So in the end, we landed here with a proposed operating budget that's reflective of, of multiple elements, multiple categories in the budget. You can see that the salaries and benefits making up 77% of the budget, it looks, you know, we're at 163 million plus. Additionally, contractual services at 39 million, 39.5 million, nearly 5 million in materials and supplies, 3 and a half million for insurance, other for the total of 210 million, 955,534. New positions in terms of this, in terms of this budget were few in terms of the proposed additions that were approved. You can see in this, on this slide that there were actually 16 positions added this year. But what we're really looking at is a net increase of seven positions because of the conversions that took place to get at the other nine. Every year, we have to take a look at some considerations, some things that might, that we know could potentially alter some plans moving forward or just some things that we have to take into consideration as we're planning. Certainly for us, we have the pending contract negotiations, also student enrollment that we've spoken about, transportation out of district tuitions that, you know, we think, we think we know, but, you know, we get new students and that's something that we have to consider. Health insurance costs, utilities, and then of course, the capital infrastructure. So, you know, first, these, we're going to, I'm just going to highlight a few of them, one of them being the pending negotiations. We are still negotiating with multiple bargaining units and that is certainly going to have an impact on our budget moving forward. Oh, no, that's okay. No, that's good. That's fine. And then here, you know, I put transportation here because I think it's worth a conversation that, that needs to be had, you know, immediately, I would say. Just in terms of the transportation total is going to, if we maintain, just to maintain our current transportation, you know, the way we're doing business in terms of what the routes look like, the way we're staggering schedules, the, the distances we use in terms of qualifying for transportation, we are looking at a significant increase over, over last year. And it's something that we just, that we, that we need to keep in, in conversation, even though it's not part of our budget, it is a concern moving forward, that there will be a substantial increase from one year to the next if we don't rethink some of the way that we're doing business right now. Mostly because I think it could impact the city's ability to meet net school spending. One of the things that Mr. Almeida talked about in terms of the enrollment was that difference between the foundation enrollment, where we saw 600-plus increase in students. But I wanted to highlight here, another element of our considerations is the in-district enrollment, the students who are in our seats. And from October 1 to October 1, we did see a 435 student increase over last year. And so that remains a consideration for us as well. We're, we're taking a look right now at the patterns this year compared to last year. Just numbers that were shared just today show that we might not see as much of an influx. This, the, the enrollment numbers over the last month look a lot different than they did just a year ago in terms of the, the student in-out numbers. And so that, that's something that we need to take a look at over the course of the next few months as well. So in years past, we've come to the meeting with a bottom line of what we were proposing in terms of a budget. But coming out of, in coming out of this year's budget meetings, we did find ourselves in the position once again of not having enough money despite the large, you know, amount in our foundation budget, not having enough money to say yes to all of the proposals that were brought forward by principals and department heads. And so we did make some difficult decisions in the additions that we highlighted earlier, the 16 positions, seven, you know, net increase when we considered the conversions. But there are additional positions that we were still mulling over late last week, looking at the numbers and considering rationales and projecting what, what might be happening over the next few months. And then an idea was presented late last week that really did just make sense. And so tonight, as part of our presentation, what we're, we're presenting to the committee a budget that not only includes an unfunded wish list, but also $500,000 that has yet to be assigned. So in presenting the budget in this way, we really feel like we're leaving the door open for more collaboration with our departmental and school leaders, as well as the school committee. Because I think over the next couple of weeks, there's an opportunity to have some discussions with the full committee. There, there is always that opportunity for our principals when they're asked to discuss what their, what their rationales are. And I think very often, or, you know, nearly always, we're at meetings where even when principals are asked to, you know, talk about what the needs are at that schools, if there's been, you know, a quote unquote, decision by the administration not to fund something and not to include it in the budget, it's difficult to have that, that discussion. And so we're leaving $500,000 unassigned in this school budget so that we can have more collaborative discussions moving forward. And so the last piece here is really just thanking people, certainly the entire central office team and our principals, and then as well as the support staff in all of our offices, as well as the committee. So, thank you.
Like looking around the table or something.
I do, I do want to thank Dr. Curly and her whole team. That was a very comprehensive presentation. A lot of wake-up calls, a lot of good stuff, and we'll keep the district moving forward at a rapid speed. But our enrollment numbers are increasing, which drives everything, costs up. So I'm sure this budget will take a, I mean, I'm sure this committee will take a good look at the budget and make the best decision for the residents of Fall River and all of our kids. With that, anybody have any questions at this time? Mr. Dias?
Thank you. So I have a few questions. So I'll start with, how much money in this budget is set aside for overtime?
For overtime?
Yes.
I will get that to you. I don't have it right in front of me, but I'll get it to you.
Okay. And how many, how much money is set aside for positions currently that aren't staffed? Like in the district?
That aren't filled.
Aren't filled, thank you.
There's quite a bit.
Do you have a, like a number?
Something I, if you would have asked, I could, I would, could have put it together, but I don't have that at the moment.
He'll have it for the budget meetings.
But I will. I'll have it in two weeks.
Yep.
Okay. And last question, actually, I'll, I'll yield for now.
Sure.
Anybody have any further questions? I know we're going to go at this hot and heavy.
If I could just, if I could just comment.
Mr. Almeida, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We are going to make the budget available. The presentation will be on the website tomorrow. In addition, the, the binder will be, the binder itself that you have, that you all got tonight in front of you will be available as a PDF on the website tomorrow as well.
Nice job, Mr. Almeida. You got a question?
Yeah, well, just a question on our C job. What are we doing? So we're going to go review, right? We have these until when? What is our next step?
First budget meeting is the 17th.
What's the date, remind me of that?
18th.
18th.
18th and 19th.
So we have two, at least two weeks to look at the budget over.
So one more piece.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Almeida.
That I missed that I should have mentioned. I'm hoping by tomorrow at the end of the day to send all the principals and the principals put together as, as requested by the superintendent, for each one of the meetings came very prepared with their own presentations of what, of their budget and their schools. And we will be sharing those out with you electronically by the end of the day tomorrow.
Ms. Lavy.
Dr. Curly, well, I mean, once we start reviewing our binders and we have questions, do you think it's appropriate maybe to put an hour a week away? Just keep, keep yourself open to questions and concerns from us?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just reach out to us, shoot us an email on, on what works for you instead of you getting bombarded with a million emails from all of us and all of us and questions. If you could just provide maybe an hour, maybe a week in the next couple of weeks where we could maybe know we can contact you and not do a million things.
We can absolutely do that. And I do think that as, I know, I understand too that questions will come up as people are reading through, you know, whether it's a, how much of this is for overtime? What is it, what is the, I would like to be able to push that information out to the committee, you know, prior to. So, yeah, if, I do think that I can absolutely set aside an hour to meet with each person. And then I'd also like to just set up some opportunity so that as people have questions, they can, I can hear the questions and, and get them out, even if it's in just like the next two Friday memos. I think that would be a good way to deal with some of the questions as they come.
Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Dias, Mr. Dias and Mr. Aguirre.
Thank you. I remember, remembered my question. So, so we, so for the last few years, we've always just been, we broke even with net school spending from the city's side. It's never gone above even?
We're actually above this year. Projected, projected. It's not, the year's not over yet, but we're above this year.
How much about?
Just over 2 million, actually.
Just, so 2 million over the percentage, so was that like 2%? So that's one on?
It's a lot, it's less than a percent.
It's less than a percentage?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So if we added a million, if we asked the city for a million more to add to net school spending, I'm assuming that would be a great help, especially since we have, I think I counted six or seven contracts that...
Absolutely.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion that this school committee formally ask the city of Fall River for a million dollars extra to go towards net school spending. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
I, I have to comment on that. Are you done, Mr. Dias?
I, I yield for now, yes.
Yeah, okay. So as you can see from the presentation, transportation going up a couple of million, the city's assessments going up a couple of million, we're, we're in a position where we cannot afford another million right now. We also have Diamond coming on board, which educates our vocational technical kids. That would be extremely reckless to try to put us up over 100% by adding another million to the budget at this time. It's poorly thought out. It's just a, a political stunt that does not go very well. I think we should definitely spend our time looking at the budget, seeing where the best cost of money is. Obviously, if there's money going to be sent, it's going to be spent on what Mr. Aguirre brought up, the Pay Center. That's going to be a joint project with the schools and the city again. So at this time, asking the city for another million dollars is very short-thinking and it doesn't do anything. I mean, it's not gonna, it's not gonna help us at this point as a city. Anybody have any further, oh, before the vote, go ahead, Mr. Dias.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I believe you went on the record stating that the city is going to have a $20 million surplus. So I used that information in making the motion I just made, and it's not a political stunt whatsoever. I mean, as you can see, we have six to seven contracts from many different labor unions across this district that aren't filled. There's plenty of ways that we can save on the money. We, as, as, as Mr. Almeida just said, we've gone above net school spending just for this year, this fiscal year. I'm just asking that this continues going to the next fiscal year. Just a million more that would go, again, to helping the students of the city and the educators of the city. I yield.
I, I, I just, I know that Mr. Dias does like doing these political stunts. I give him credit for it. But at the same time, we have no idea, I watched that whole presentation and I did not see the word federal government and what they're going to do with the Department of Education or funding going forward. I don't know where that's going to end up. I don't hear good things, but I have no inside knowledge of it. And for him to make a motion to hit taxpayers in the city of Fall River for another million dollars at this time is totally irresponsible. Let's do the budget first, see where the money shakes out. We do have a lot more work to do at the Pay Center. We have transportation increasing, and trying to hit the city for a million dollars right now is totally fiscally irresponsible. He hasn't even looked through the book yet and he's asking for more money. That's not how this works. Anything further before we vote? Mr. Aguirre?
Mr. Almeida, did I hear you say, I was, I just couldn't hear, that the city's over by 2 million? What was the, like, when the dust settles for this year? You think that's where it's going to land?
Yes.
And that's based on increased healthcare or something like what?
It's, it's based on retirement. The retirement cost has increased.
So the retirement cost increased, so the city had to pay more?
Yep.
That we didn't anticipate or something? That's what you are anticipating?
Yes.
If healthcare costs come in, that's gonna, perfect. So I seconded Mr. Dias's motion. And it's quite ironic that on page of, one, two, three, four, on page five of this document that we just got, the superintendent read a comment and it says, "This budget, the budget is not just a collection of numbers, but an expression of our values and our aspirations." I seconded this motion because we should be aspiring to give more than 100% of net school school spending. So, I seconded a motion based on, I think, a pretty valid quote. I like the quote, "It's something that we value and we aspire to. I aspire to serve on the committee one day where the administration in the city gives more than 100% of net school spending." Now, the mayor makes valid points that he's got concerns or whatever, but this is just a vote of asking for it. The mayor can then therefore say, you know, when he does his budget, you can't do it. To the mayor's point about the federal funding and the cuts that are gonna come down, I think it's even more important that this committee take a stand and say, "We aspire to have the city give us more money because we know that the government is gonna fund and gonna cut some other things." So, when the, when the federal government cuts $2 million from Title I and Title II and all those things, where are we gonna get the money to pay the teachers, the staff, and all the support staff that we pay for with that? So, I aspire, as I think Mr. Dias does, and by this quote indicates, to ask the city for more money. And at, at the end of the day, if they can't do it, they can't do it. The mayor can reduce down anything we ask for. So, that's the reason why I voted for a second. I got plenty of other questions, but I yield on this. Thank you.
I, I just have to stress that probably 10 minutes into a discussion about the budget, Mr. Dias wants to ask taxpayers in Fall River to send the $273 million budget, more money from the taxpayers for his, whatever he wants to spend it on. All I'm telling the committee to do is vote no on this motion. Let's do the budget and see how these numbers shake out and decide the best course of action, not receive a book, watch a PowerPoint and say, "Add a million dollars." I don't know why he obviously has something against the taxpayers, but at this point, I think $273 million is substantial.
Okay, we gotta make a point of order here, Mr. Mayor.
No, hold on, I have the floor.
You're engaging in unprofessional behavior and it's unbecoming of your position.
Mr. Dias, I know you're uncomfortable. I have the floor.
It makes you unbecoming of your position.
Mr. Dias, please don't be rude. I don't interrupt you when you're talking away, doing nothing unprofessional. I'm just stating the facts. If it's your position, you wanna hit 'em. I don't favor that. I think we vote no. We do a timely, thoughtful examination of the budget, and we go forward from there. At this point, it's so early in the process, I don't see any point to hitting the Fall River taxpayers for another $1 million for Mr. Dias. Shelley, then Bobby.
I have to agree on two points. First of all, we just received this today. We've barely had time to ask a question. I have zero problem asking for more money when necessary. I believe last year, the mayor wanted us, wanted us to have less money in transport, and I looked at it and said, "What? No. Figure it out. You're not taking money from, you know..." I have no problem asking for money. However, when you just start a process and you're asking for money, it's like going to your parents and saying, "Can I have $1,000? I don't know what I'm gonna spend it on yet, but I, I know I'm gonna, I'm gonna need something." I just think it's, it's not fair to the taxpayers right now. We're building a high school. We have sewer rates maybe going up. We have a train coming in, which is wonderful for some people, but difficult for others that rents are gonna skyrocket. Okay? We have a community that economically is suffering. So, yes, I will ask for more money. If we look at this budget and say, "Hey, we need the money to hire these teachers, or we need the money to do this," or "We're not able to do something necessary," no problem. I'll be the first one up here to make that motion and ask. But I just opened this up. We have a long, this is a long process, right? Maybe new for some, some have been here since, you know, for long, much longer than others. So, there's different levels of experience up here, but what I can say is that we're gonna have several meetings. It's a transparent situation. We're gonna have the ability to ask all kinds of questions, and at the end, we can ask for whatever money we want, and, you know, probably not gonna get it, but I'll be happy to ask for it, okay? But I don't feel comfortable doing that. And I also would just love it if, you know, that's all I have to say. I'd love to vote on this and move on to the next question.
Mr. Bailey?
So, I just, I just wanna say, I agree with both points, but for me, it's far too early in the budget process to make that decision. Now, if it's needed, our job is to advocate for the schools, right? So, this has nothing to do with the city's side or anything else. It has to do with our jobs as school committee members to advocate for the schools. Now, with that being said, if we got to the point in the budget process and you made this motion, I would be completely on board with that. But we did just receive these binders. If it's more money we need or there's cuts or anything like that, I have no problem agreeing with Mr. Dias. But I agree with the mayor at this point where it's way too early. But I just wanna reiterate, as we go back and forth, our job is to advocate for the schools, all right? And that's just where I stand.
Well, go ahead, Mr. Aguirre.
So, Dr. Curley, I just had a pointed question for you. As the superintendent and CFO, CEO of this department, do you aspire to have the city spend above net school spending for education? Aspire?
So, like, to, that one vibrates. So, what I aspire to do is meet the needs of our students through our budget. If we get to a point in our discussions where it becomes apparent that we're not able to, based on like 100% of net school spending, then I would, then I clearly would not be opposed to spending more than 100% of net school spending. But right now, I'm not prepared to ask for more than that.
So, thank you. So, when I looked at the slides, which, just for the edification of the public, this school committee received this binder and these slides just now, at 5:30. We say this, I say this every year. We just got this at 5:30 today. But when you look at it as a whole, I try to pick out what slides are really pressing to me right now, my first night of looking at this. The slide that I look at is the slide that indicates that $1.3 million of positions were recommended by the folks that are sitting out there, principals, directors, and the like, that we cannot fund in this budget. That's the slide that first comes to my head. So, I haven't gone through this with a fine-tooth comb, but I will. That's the slide that gets me. So, when I seconded Mr. Dias's motion, it's with that type of thing in place. So, if you knew going in that you had an extra $1 million in the available budget, you would have been able to agree to some of those positions if you had that money ahead of time. That's the only reason why I'm suggesting it. I do understand fully the needs of the city and the like, but the money, if we did do this, is not coming out of the taxpayer's pocket, as the mayor has indicated. As Mr. Dias stated, the city has $20 million in stabilization slash free cash. That stabilization money is not in any taxpayer's budget, in their wallet, in their bank account. That's money in the city's bank account that they say, you know, "We got 20 million, we got 18 million, we got 20 million, we got 18 million." So, what Mr. Dias is asking is if we did this motion, you could put that money. The increase of 2.4 million, Mr. Almeida, 'cause I know you worked for the city, the increase of 2.4 million in net, in the spending that the city has tonight, if the city took that money from their free cash, is that coming out of any taxpayer's pocket?
No.
No. So, they have 18 or 20 million. If the city, if the city wants to pay the increases that they are by law obligated to do, it's not coming out of any taxpayer. It's gonna come out of free cash. Now, granted, there's other expenses, and I'm not trying to get into that, but at the end of the day, I think it's irresponsible for anybody on the school committee not to at least say, "We aspire to it," because this has been gone on for 30 years in this district of whether we have 100% or not. It's a matter of budgets, about what your values, what are your judgments? What do you, what do you wanna do? If we aspire to just be at the bare minimum, then vote no. If you aspire to be above that in net school spending and have that conversation in the future, then I would encourage everyone to vote yes. I'm solidly voting yes, and I have plenty of other questions. I yield.
Mr. Dias?
Thank you, and this will be my final comments. And I, I do appreciate, like, both my colleagues to my right, they make great points, but to Mr. Aguirre's point, I think it's better that we have this conversation now than have it during budget season. So, if we do get a yes vote, the administration has time to prepare going into the budget cycle next week. So, and just so the community understands at home, as Mr. Aguirre pointed out, my, my motion would not raise taxes or wouldn't charge the taxpayer. What does charge the taxpayer are property taxes, water rates, sewer rates. There's only one person on the stage who has increased that number astronomically on the taxpayer.
Point of order, I'm sorry. I don't know why we're discussing this. If you want him not to call you political.
All right, all right. Whoa, 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 wait, wait, wait. Mr. Dias, Mr. Dias, we're gonna vote on the motion.
We, we're talking about the budget. We had a discussion on, on property rates.
Motion, move the question.
No. Wait, 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 wait. Let's, Mr. Dias, you have anything further to add?
Yes. What you said was inaccurate. You should apologize.
Well, I'm gonna make, can I, are you done?
And the only individual who makes political stunts is you, Mr. Mayor. You should be honest to the facts. I yield.
I will be honest, and I don't know what the point of this is. I am under the impression that every dollar in the stabilization fund is taxpayers' money. Am I wrong there, Mr. Almeida?
Well, originally, that's where, that's where it generated from.
So, if I take $1 million out of the stabilization fund, and I do wanna put it back in for trash, for policemen, for Diamond, for any costs associated, it's gonna come from the taxpayers, isn't it?
So, it's money, but it's money that's been made available over the years.
But it's taxpayers' money. That's all I said, Mr. Dias. What you wanna do is hit them for more money. That's all I said. Let's vote this question, please. Mr. Aguirre, please, can we vote the question?
I just have a question from Mr. Almeida, based on what you just said.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Almeida, the Medicaid reimbursement amount that the city gets, what is that total roughly?
It, it's varied over the years. We got it up to almost $2 million at one point, one year, but it's, I believe it's around $1.3 to $1.4 million right now.
All right. So, part of the reason why I think this is a fruitful discussion is that the members of the committee need to understand what that means. So, what that means is the expenses for those services come out of this budget, and the city gets $1.3 million increased into their budget, into their bank account, and the school department gets how much of that?
None.
Zero. So, that's $1.3 million that the city gets to the good, and the schools get zero. Now, granted, the, the city has to put in their 100%, but like in any other budget, and I've recommended this for many years to the legislature, is that they need to, when they say that the city has to put in a certain amount, they should be looking at that funding, and you reduce it, so that now there, there'll be a $1.3 million below 100% of net school spending, if you took the cash that they're getting reimbursed. So, let's look at it. This is a valid question, and I think we should have this conversation in the future as well. I yield. Thank you.
Can we vote on this one now? Ms. Cabral, please call the roll on the million dollars from, for this, from the city.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
No, at the moment.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
No.
Ms. Larrabee?
No.
Ms. Pereira?
No.
No. Further questions? Mr. Dias?
Thank you. Mr. Almeida, so the debt exclusion for, for this high school we're currently in, how much does, does that currently cost the city?
I, the debt exclusion for...
Is that on the city's side or is that on the school department's side?
That's, it's on the city's side. I'm not sure what that is per year.
Okay. I think it's about $5 million this year, Mr. Dias.
Thank you. And that's something that goes to the property, the taxpayers of the city?
That was the, that was the tax that the property owners voted for, yes.
That you advocated for? You, you're on the yes campaign, correct?
I think the most people up here advocated for that, yeah.
I wasn't, I wasn't on that election. So, going back to, to this right now, so, what, and this is actually more of a question for the superintendent, so what, this budget process, when we work with the city, do we work with the, who do we work with on the city's side to put together this budget?
Emily.
The mayor and the CFO.
Do we work with the city administrator?
Not this year. Not, not this year.
Who, who is the city administrator currently? I'm just curious.
Well, hey, hold on, this, we're talking about the school budget. Please, Mr. Dias, the city administrator's never been involved with the school budget, not as long as I've been there.
Okay. I yield.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, just a few questions, but the, Mr. Dias's question about the debt exclusion for Durfy High School, I advocated for that as well.
Yeah.
As the mayor, the mayor and I held signs on the corner at some point for that as well. So, I don't take that back. What I am concerned and have been concerned, and this either predates or right around the time when the mayor took office, was when we went to the public for that, we advocated for how much money was gonna cost the taxpayers over the course of all the years. And there's charts and graphs that were submitted, they were in public, they were at meetings. The answer was $3.6 million, which was gonna cost the taxpayers for seven or eight years, seven or eight years only, and then it was gonna go to zero. If anybody wants to check it, go back and re-review it. That's what we told the taxpayers before we got them to vote yes. Seven or eight years at $3.6 million. For the last three years and more, it's been over $5 million, and it's gonna continue for 30 years. So, do the math yourself, if you're out there, watch. It, it's a different, what we advocated for was a little different. So, I don't take back advocating, but what we advocated for and what reality is, just two totally different things. But relative to this particular budget, Dr. Curley, my question is on what was, and you know this, we've had the conversation before, what guidance was given to the principals or directors relative to what this document is and role of the school committee? Because I think that's really important for us all to understand, that as we go forth, if this is truly a transparent process that's fluid, I'm, I'm curious what they all think is in here and what the school committee's role in potentially changing anything within it.
So, when I met with principals on Friday to review with them where we, where we landed in terms of requested positions, conversions, and things like that, I explained to them, you know, a kind of newer element to the budget in terms of having some, you know, a line item, the $500,000 that we were leaving, you know, not open indefinitely, but this idea that it would offer principals more of an opportunity during these meetings to advocate for some of their, the things that had not been funded yet, and also allow for some time for, you know, some of the stuff that came into this budget unfunded is really, it's a, it's a function of numbers, right? Enrollment, looking to see how things shake out from year to year. We sometimes, you know, we're in January, February, March, trying to anticipate numbers, wondering if, you know, can we fund a position that we may not need in September or, you know, things along those lines? And this, you know, I explained that this would offer some time for, you know, some of those pieces to shake out, but also so that when they were invited to the podium to talk about something for which they'd advocated, something that was on the wish list, that they would feel, you know, empowered, knowing that the discussion was still ongoing, that it wasn't just sitting out there on a wish list as a, maybe someday next year, if we find that we have some extra money because of unfilled positions, we'll convert something, kind of thing.
So, in essence, that we can change anything we want within this budget. So, they're not, they haven't been told, guarantee everything that's in here is done. Because if the school committee, next two weeks or whatever, something happens, and we say, you know, "We gotta change these four positions from this to that," it's the prerogative of this committee to be able to change those things.
So, I did talk to the principals on Friday about the fact that I know that in the past there have been, you know, certainly people who've come up to the podium who maybe feel like they are put on the spot, that they're not, you know, allowed or whatever it is to talk about something that they wanted that wasn't funded. I will say that there are some things that are on the unfunded wish list, I'd prefer not to discuss them today, but that I, they're there because like I legitimately don't think they're necessary. You know, we've discussed it with our team, I've talked to principals about it, to say, I don't think you really need that position, it would be a nice-to-have kind of thing. And so I don't, I don't know how, I don't necessarily think that any of us want to be in a position where literally every decision that's been made in terms of what shows up in the budget and what doesn't is just completely up for discussion, mostly because there has been a lot of time put in by our principals, by the central office team, in making some of these decisions, and there's an element to that piece of it being disrespectful if, based on some, you know, public discussions, not that I'm not, not that I won't have them publicly, but that decisions made by the administration in consultation with principals would just be like unceremoniously overturned. So the short answer is, no, I did not say to principals, hey, the school committee can do whatever they want with this budget, and some of your stuff might get cut, and heck, if you have some conversations with people, maybe some things can get added. I did not have that conversation with people.
So I guess, you know, I've said this almost every year that we've been here, that this process is a little backwards. We have a budget that just gets presented today. Nobody on this committee's had a discussion with any members of the principals, departments, or leadership. It puts us in a bind to look at it, and I do appreciate the $500,000 flexibility, because that at least says, we're not going to totally waste our time over the next several weeks listening to people. But at the same time, this process is not a good one for collaboration and to have us all working together to try to get a budget that takes everybody's thoughts into consideration. I always say, use the term winners and losers, that, you know, over the years, it's like, well, if I can get the superintendent and her team to agree to put a position or something in here, then I'm a winner, and then those that didn't get it, and they didn't make it, those were the losers, you know, I'm not calling them winners and losers, but you get the idea. So that, to me, is not a good process, in my mind, and then when we get it, so now what do we do? Do we just say we're going to meet here for five, six, seven, eight hours, listen to people for a rubber stamp? And I don't want to waste my time or anybody else's time on being a rubber stamp. I want to be able to articulate some of the concerns, ask a lot of questions, so that we can try to get to the better part. But I do think that it's the role of the committee to do that. And if we took a history lesson back to the last time we had to make cuts, and anybody that served on this committee or other committees that have to make cuts, when we have to cut the budget, guess what we do as school committee? We sit here and pick out every single line item, and if anybody's been here long enough, you know that you say, no, we're going to pick it. So when it's time to make the tough decisions and the cuts, we take it line by line and say, this is how we do it. But when it's time to create the budget, we don't have that same flexibility, and that's something that I think needs to be overhauled in the future. One of the line items that I'm looking for, Mr. Almeida, is the, when you look at investigations, outside investigations, what line item in this budget would that fall under?
Legal services.
Can you point that to me, or in what tab?
I believe it's in my department, I believe.
Under finance? Okay, I will yield, and I'll look for it, and then I'll come back after.
I just want to correct one thing before I go to Mr. Corey. Mr. Aguirre, the first year we folded the entire Derfi debt into the regular budget, no override charge to the taxpayers, the next two years we reduced the debt by a half, so the taxpayers got a 50% break on the cost of Derfi. So you were right, they weren't paying what was said, but we were able to help them by reducing it three years in a row. I think this year was the first year they got the full one, and of course, next year we're looking to see if there's a way to help them by reducing it again.
Yeah, I know, it was COVID money, and thankfully we had it.
No, not the first year, we didn't have COVID money for that second year. Mr. Corey?
Mr. Chairman, again, this meeting was an initial discussion on the budget, and we're going to have time to distill the proposals as well as the numbers. And to make some recommendations like I heard across the table today, are very premature. I see all our principals sitting out here in the audience, I see our central staff sitting in the audience, I see my chief financial officer at the podium, who I have inherent trust in, because he's been doing this year after year after year. He's guided the money in our school department so well. That's not to say that we cannot question it. We will question it, and we should question it, but we should question it with a sense of dignity and respect toward the people that we have running our school department, rather than with a tone of disrespect and distrust, which I really loathe, I really loathe. I am up here as a school board member to support and advocate for our school department, and so that our principals can get adequate funding for the programs that they propose. And I look forward to the next two weeks, when we sit down with both the primary and the secondary level principals to hear their needs, before we make any final decisions on final numbers for our budget, and to support our CFO and our school superintendent in their final chapters of trying to give this budget a go for the future. I know that numbers change, our enrollment is changing, I'm incredibly concerned about our cost for transportation, and I would like us all to examine those numbers closely. But I'm very proud, because every year that I've been up here as a school board member, I know that with, as we wrangle back and forth with numbers and ideas, I know that by the end of this process, we will get it done, and it should be done with dignity and respect. Thank you, I yield.
Mr. Dias?
Thank you, just two things to the superintendent. One, I agree with Mr. Aguirre, I do want to thank you for including that $500,000 line item, so we, again, the committee does have some wiggle room. It also appears that, this is my first go-around at a budget cycle, I would love to see, and it looks like you're encouraging that, like fostering that environment for the department heads and all the principals could speak openly to us, so we can hear their concerns and hear why they're, you know, either defending, supporting some items on the budget. But I could just make one request for next week, if we could find out specifically to how much we spend for outside legal, especially Mr. Michael Joyce and that firm as well, I think that's one area that we can look to potentially rein in some of the funding and use it somewhere elsewhere, so I'd like just to potentially have that just for next week. I yield.
That was Mr. Aguirre's question. Mr. Almeida, did you have that for him?
What's that?
The illegal costs?
Where it was located.
Where it was located, I'm sorry.
The budget sits in the finance department.
Okay.
I think I just...
And what we've spent the last, what we've spent the last several years is in the front, in the budget detail, so the last five years, the last five years is there.
Mr. Bailey, I understand, if I'll ask the question after.
But if you're looking specifically for Michael Joyce costs, that's something that I have in my files, but that I can make available.
Okay, Mr. Bailey?
No, I was just, it's just more of a comment more than anything else. I just wanted to kind of, as we're going through this process, because since I've been on this committee, I do hear Mr. Aguirre say there's winners and losers in this, and I know he doesn't mean it like that, but I'm just trying to gain a sense of what that means, and I know, you know, we keep throwing it around, we're talking about transparency and trust, and, you know, Kev, I said it in the last meeting, I trust you, and I know that you've done a good job, and you're going to do a good job in this, but I just want to see the full scope on how that looks and what we're talking about, because I know everyone on this stage is passionate, you know, about getting a budget passed, making sure we, you know, we support the superintendent, and we support the principals in this process. But I do, also, it is a budget, I want to make sure that we're in a position to fund the things that we need to, and have real conversations when we can't, you know, fund something, because it's no secret, right, we keep talking about the budget and things we can fund and we're not, I just don't want to turn around, and it's, it's the end of March, and there's things that are unsaid on my end. I'll yield with that.
So I can tell you, because I've been here, I've been here a long time, you know, specifically over the last, you know, winners and losers, I get the comment, I understand how that works, you know, how it goes, but the decisions that we've made over the last several years with the addition of all the positions has been specific to, you know, student needs and enrollment, and what the things look like at the schools, and it's also been, the additions have been made to benefit, you know, benefit the schools and to provide and give them more resources for the students. So many, and nearly most of the decisions that have been made have been specific to a ratio that we've got in place, and we're trying to make sure that every school, that it looks uniform across the board. If you look at the FTE charts that we have in the front, you'll see that, you know, based on school size and everything, they pretty much align. You know, there's a couple one-offs here and there, but it's all based on student needs, student enrollment, and everything else that happens in the schools.
Mr. Aguirre, then, Ms. Larrabee?
So the line item for legal services, the 530400, so it's $300,000. So you're saying that's based on what we currently spend? But the reason for my question is because I've asked now for at least three months or four months to the mayor, to Dr. Curly, Tony Assad, everybody, to ask for any complaints that came in against any school committee member over the years that we haven't investigated. It has to be investigated by an outside attorney, which we're doing that currently. What I've been asking for is I want this on an agenda, on March 10th's agenda, and I've followed all of the protocols relative to that, but this has to be an amount that's listed on that 530400, legal services, for outside investigations, that is an increase over the current. So if we're using it as what we've spent in the past, that's not a good number, because I'm telling you that I've asked over and over for months to ask for the outside investigation that we keep on talking about. And so that number, I think, has to be looked at, it needs to be on the agenda so we can talk about it in the appropriate time, has to be in executive session, but I don't know why we keep on doing it, but I'm concerned that this isn't going to be increased. Do you understand what I'm talking about?
I got you.
So if somehow you can figure that out, break it down, I agree with Mr. Dias, I don't think that Michael Joyce's pay comes out of this line.
It comes out, it comes out of the...
Some of it, or?
It comes out of the sped, sped.
Right, so I think there's, when we say $300,000, I think legal services kind of in general, all, like all the grants anywhere else it comes from, because I think we need to take a hard look at it. He needs, when you make $250,000, $300,000 a year as an attorney on an outside counsel, I think we should be looking to somebody that we can have a contingency, that, you know, you're working on a retainer, not just as you need it, because everyone keeps calling them, and he's needed, I'm not suggesting that it's not needed in the school, Dr. Curly, Ms. Obenchain, everybody needs to have that service, but when are we going to rein it in? Ever since Matt Malone's been here, the number has skyrocketed, because Matt Malone would go and ask him for opinions instead of asking our own attorney, who is on retainer. Tony Assad works 80 hours one week, he gets paid the same as he's going to get, no matter what. Michael Joyce makes, works 80 hours, can you imagine that? You better get a mortgage. So I think that we just got to look at it. Some of the other questions I have briefly is on the contract. So we passed the contract, the teacher contract, retroactive, and I sent an email earlier today relative to this issue, so this shouldn't be news to anybody, but I'm just looking for feedback on the email I sent relative to, are the pieces of the contract that we did retroactive, are they in place, are they getting paid, and are they built in here?
They're built in. They're, all the retroactive pieces are scheduled to be paid out for the 14th coming up.
So in the current year?
Yes.
But in this budget, the pieces of, you know, first step, you know, everybody's going to start off at a higher step, all those good things are built into the, I haven't gotten to see all the...
They are.
What would, roughly, what is the first step now? If we get rid of the first step, is it $53,000?
Yes.
Something like that, instead of 51? So I think that's an important piece to know, that we made a good contract, and we're also paying people for the, that are new, so if you're a new teacher and you're coming out here, at that rate, you're going to get more than any of the ones locally for that first year of teaching, and I want to make sure that that gets implemented. And the other pieces in my email, I'd like to highlight at some point with a return email to the full committee, to the leads, how many leads we have, when they become going, and all that stuff, so I just think that we need to focus on that. Dr. Curly, you made a question about the transportation and net school spending. Can you just clarify what that means, because we haven't been privy to any conversations related to the transportation, but that's a clear concern?
So we're estimating that if we maintain our current transportation structure, that it will, there's going to be like a more than $2 million increase in transportation costs for next year.
And that's borne by the city?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So I don't understand, and that's not counted towards the net school spending?
No, so what I said was that, our concern always with something like transportation is that it, there's a potential, like that the city could potentially have some difficulty meeting net school spending, because there's, you know, a finite amount of money, and if transportation costs go up, so that transportation is always this outlier thing out there.
So if, have you had conversations, or, Ms. Almeida, with the city's side, to say that if it is whatever you put on that slide, that they're not going to fund education at 100%?
No, no, but I think it's something that just sits out there, just like Mr. Almeida referenced, the fact that there were some increases in costs, and we went over net school spending, you know, I just, I think it's something that I think we have to keep in mind when there are things that we will go to the city for outside of net school spending.
I understand, I just was trying to clarify what you had mentioned, so, and I'm on the facilities subcommittee, so we can talk about transportation, but if the money is additional, that's a city expense, so we can't really get into whether they're going to fund it or not, they have to fund it.
Of course.
There's no option. So that same thing of the $1.3 million that's in there for McKinney-Vento, is that a new reimbursement, like we went up by that much?
That's how much it was this year.
That we, they have received a reimbursement?
Yes.
How much was in the budget originally for that?
A million. Originally, it was a million dollars.
So if they got three and a half, $350,000, where did that money go?
It's sitting in the account, it sits in the account.
In the city account?
Yep.
So we're not taking it at all, it's sitting there. The other question I have, Dr. Curly, is, you know, I've been advocating for a district-wide reconfiguration, which went back to March of when we were having the discussion about the pay center and the early childhood and where the kids go. And, you know, you and I have had these conversations, the email I wanted it on the February agenda, and I haven't seen the March agenda, but I'm assuming that something's being presented.
For a redistricting you're talking about? We don't have a redistricting plan for September. I mean, no, we don't. That's something that we would have, and actually, I have said this aloud to you, that's something that we would have had to communicate to families by now, and we would be looking to get input from families, that's something that we will be doing for the following fall, not for fall of 2025.
I can't tell you how disappointed I am in that, and I want you, and I want your team, I want the committee, I want anybody that wants to look, to go back to the meetings that we had in March, April, at Spencer-Borden, relative to what we needed to do. The members of the team that decided where we had for pre-K, the needs and all that stuff, was a district-wide team of all of your key players. At those meetings, it was said in a public meeting that we need to redistrict for a number of reasons, ELL services, transportation, so all the things we're hearing now are budget busters and problems. Space, we don't have any space, we've got 600 new kids, we've got no space. Was said March and April that we were going to do it. We were going to look at it, and we had to look at the entire thing, so we had plenty of time to do. We did a plan that we paid money for to talk about how many kids were moving up, we did nothing with it in this department. So now we come, what are we going to do? We're at a crisis on class size, we don't have the pre-K happening, we're not redistricting anyone, we're complaining that the transportation's going to go up of $2 million. Well, no kidding, when we got kids that go to school here, get transported over there because there's no room, and then they get transported over there. Your own people, your own people have sat at the table with the subcommittee and has said this, we need a redistricting plan across the entire city because we have things that don't make sense. Now we're short money for here, we're short money for there, so I encourage you to go back, get your team, look at it, and say, what are we going to do? Because the time has gone by, and once again, we'll do it next year, just like the pay center, we'll do it next year. The facts are there that we should have done it, we dropped the ball, we dropped the ball, your team dropped the ball, and anybody that was at those subcommittee meetings dropped the ball, because we should have been looking to do some of this work, and now we have extra transportation money, no kidding. We have class size issues, no kidding. So go back to the emails if you can, I asked you to put it on the agenda then, I would like to have it on the agenda for March 10th, where we can discuss, what are we doing for the redistricting, period? You said you were having a redistricting team, if I recall, back in January, set up.
Yeah, we have, yep, so we have met with, we have met internally on three occasions, I think, to talk about the numbers across schools, look at some potential plans. It is a much larger project than anything we could get off the ground for fall.
I'm asking to the mayor, I've asked you to have your team present in a March 10th meeting, where we can ask questions to try to figure out what we can do in the short term, as well as the long term, because that's what we were told...
We can present the data, I'm completely open to suggestions.
Thank you, and I think that's what we asked for back in March, and I think that's where we need to go, you know, moving forward. The, last question from Mr. Almeida, when I look at the budget where each salary is, are those exactly, is there any money that's not spent here, other than the $500,000?
No.
So if I went through every line item here, the only thing that we have is $500,000 total?
That I am aware of right now, yes.
And the Title I slash grants, how does that impact what's in here or not in here? Has there been any consideration for, because we've shifted money, you know, you know what I'm talking about?
So as of right now, you know, there's not much I know, you know, I'll be honest with you, there's not much, there hasn't been much communication as far as what the plans are moving forward, we have not heard specifically, we have not had specifics on what the federal funds are going to look like, but we've been told to plan for some cuts, we just don't know what that is yet.
So what is the assumption in this budget, I guess is the more pointed question, for Title I, let's say, that's the biggest one?
So I've, so right now, I'm going off of like a 5% assumption, 5% reduction from what we have currently, yes.
So anything above that, we would...
I will have to reassess, reassess what we're doing, yes.
Thank you very much, I yield.
Mr. Dias?
Thank you, just a few questions, so I'll start with transportation, just going, so Mr. Almeida, can you just basically break down real quickly how that's funded again? It's like some of it's funded through the city, and some of it's funded through...
Transportation is a city expense, and as part... Transportation is a city expense, and as part, as part of it being a city expense, the only reimbursement, there's a reimbursement piece to transportation that the city receives. They receive money, they receive money for McKinney-Vento, and they receive money for foster care, it's a federal man.
Special education, however, is funded through the schools.
No, it's, transportation's a city expense, transportation sits outside of net school spending, so it's a cost that the city has to bear, you know, given the students that we have. But the component that Mr. Aguirre was talking about before was the piece on the reimbursement, and so depending on how much money is spent specific to the McKinney-Vento students and the foster care students, we get a percentage reimbursement of the total that we spent.
So those bills that we sign off on every other week for special education, those come out of a city account?
It comes out of, the account, it lies in our budget, but it's a city, but it's a city expense.
They fund the account, thank you. So just real quickly on, so Michael, Michael Joyce, you said that comes out of special education?
It does, yes.
I don't believe all of his legal action has been special education, I know some of it is, but I don't think all of it is, if we can get an answer on that, not today, however, that's something we should look into as well. And just a quick comment in general, I wish we had, again, the union negotiations on the agenda tonight, so we could have some more discussions on where some of these funds can go to, especially the 500,000, I'm not going to go into detail, obviously, however, it would have been nice if the school committee leadership would have included that on the agenda. Last question, if the city, for whatever reason, doesn't meet net school spending, I don't know if you can answer this, or this would be a superintendent, attorney aside question, what options do we have as a city to enjoin the city to ensuring that they pay their legal amount, if the city, for whatever reason, doesn't want to follow the law?
I believe that is a question for our CFO.
So the city is obligated to spend to the minimum requirement, which is the 100%, which in this case, in FY '26, is the 274 million. And if, for whatever reason, when we file the end of the year report and the city does not meet the requirement, once everything's been paid and everything's been paid out and the city hasn't met it, then the state will send their notification to us indicating that we haven't met it, once I've filed the end of the year report, and then at that point in time, we'll work with the city to recoup the additional funds that were not met.
When was the last time that's happened?
Last year.
They did not meet net school spending last year?
When we filed the report, they did not, they did not meet it, but then we worked with them immediately to get the money back.
And we got the money back?
We did.
They worked, okay, thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Aguirre?
Just a comment on the list of positions that were asked for, asked for that is not funded. One that has stuck with me for a long time is that we have a need here for recruiting teachers, paraprofessionals, the like, just staff in general. So this committee approved in 2018 a human resource audit, 2018. Since 2018, we have received over, being easy, $120 million extra. It's still not here, according to what I'm seeing. So they recruit, they ask for, we ask for an outside person to come in and look, we don't recruit the people that we need to in order to work in the schools, it's a competitive market out there. Why is it that we still don't have, and this is not the first time I'm bringing this up, this has been brought up for months and years, why is it that we still don't have a position that they recommended in the human resource audit in this budget when we have $30 million this year alone? Somebody please try to enlighten the committee on why and how.
I haven't heard it.
If you want to read it, they just emailed it to us. It's a 2018 human resource audit paid for by a consultant, feel free to read it. In the end, it says, "This district is highly in need of a human resource recruiter." That's what it says, it's not Kevin's opinion, it's the opinion of the person who we hired as a professional. And since then, I kept asking over and over to HR directors, superintendents, finance people, anybody that wants to listen, and it's still not here, and we get $30 million more. I don't have a good answer, I don't know if there is an answer. Do you have anything, does anybody, is the human resource guy here?
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak to why position wasn't added back in 2018, but I know that a position was added to the human resource department in the last couple of years, human resource coordinator, that has been somewhat unfilled for a time, and we actually are bringing someone on board now, just signed off on it today, and part of that person's position is around recruitment. And so I think it's been, I would say that in the past couple of years, or at least, I'll say in the last year, it's been difficult to know what is needed, not needed, because the department hasn't really been fully staffed, and now that we are fully staffed, I think we'd be, we could better assess what the need is, and whether it's called a recruiter or a coordinator or whatever it is, we understand the need for that function coming out of the department, but we haven't been staffed in that way since I've been on board, so I'd like to see what filling that position can do for us.
All I'd ask is that when the human resource department comes up, that you look at the audit and we have that discussion, public session. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further? Oh, I'm sorry, it's like Ms. Larabee.
Go ahead, Mr. Dias.
I skipped her.
No, 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 go ahead, Ms.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll promise to be brief, just on Mr. Aguirre's point, because I was the one who requested to see that audit, and the superintendent just mentioned that we added a position like that, what's the position?
Human resource coordinator, I believe is the name of the position.
And if we can just get an answer within this week, because I did put it in under the form, I don't know if you saw it yet, we can find out what we've done with that, with that audit, with the review, whatever it was, because, you know, I don't feel like we should be spending money on reviews, get an outside opinion from an expert, and not doing anything with it, and I understand it was from 2018 and there was nothing done with it then, but maybe we could take a second look at it now and just, you know, hear your opinion as to whether it's, you know, some things are, I mean, are good, some things that we disagree with, yeah, I think that'd be great. And I had another question about, I'll let Ms. Larabee go first.
No, go ahead, finish up, you got four.
Last question regarding facilities and operations, I understand there was a reorg done last year, do we have a cost on how much that added to the budget?
How much the reorg added to the budget?
Yes.
It's all in here, but?
The reorg, the amount the reorg costs in this budget?
No, the planned budget for each one of the departments are in there.
I guess what I was looking for is how much, the increase from before the reorg to?
It's something I would have to calculate, you're asking it, you know, off the top, off the top, it's something that I could, I could do for you.
Thank you, I guess the reason I was asking is to, we're looking for ways to, you know, look for ways that we can reduce the budget, that's one that could be considered, not necessarily supporting it right now, but I think it's worth a discussion down the road.
But if I can, but if I can ask, if there are specific questions and things you want me to put together, if you could just let me know in advance, and I'll make sure that I have it for you.
Thank you.
Just quickly, so on the 18th, Dr. Curly, what is the expectation for us that night?
I know there was some conversations a while back, a couple of months ago, I believe Mr. Aguirre brought up, and I think we all agreed, that we were just going to give you the leeway to meet with the department heads and the principals and then come back to us. What are we expecting to do on the 18th?
So actually, I was going to pose that question before we closed out tonight, because I, I feel like we left earlier discussions around it, saying that we would not have principals do individual, principals and department heads do individual presentations this year, they would be available for questions, based on how we were scheduling things, so I just wanted to get some clarification tonight, because, you know, we have since, you know, made that adjustment in terms of the unallocated budget line there, and so I don't know if it's the will of the committee to change how we go about business on, for those next couple of meetings, and because I want to make sure the principals were prepared for that.
Right, I wasn't really bringing it up to change anything, because that's what I vaguely remember, is we were going to take that route, but I, my opinion as one member, if they're all here and they're willing to answer some questions, if we have, if it's something you can't answer, I'm fine with that protocol, but I'll leave it to the committee to weigh in.
Yeah. Anybody?
Anybody got an opinion? So I think we make them available if they're here, and if they, if we get to the green school and Mr. Corey's got a question for Dr. Dunn, we'll bring them up, but if not, I can see from what the superintendent said, by giving us the hour prior to the meeting, and if we want to email her specific questions, I mean, maybe we can have some of them answered before the meeting on the 18th, if not, we bring them up that night, whatever's easier for the committee. Mr. Dias?
Thank you, I was just going to ask, since I've never gone through the process, what's been the precedent, is that something we usually do?
We used to bring up the principals for each school and they would make a short presentation, but I believe it was, Mr. Aguirre said, listen, a lot of this is over and over, if we can target where we want to make the changes, up or down in the budget, it's probably a little more specific and we can do it that way, it would help, but if they're here and they're available, we can do that too. So why don't we plan on that and go through the schools on the 18th and go from there? And if there's questions that we all come up with, when we're looking through the schools, email them to Dr. Curly, and we can try to get some answers that we can announce that night at the meeting. Anybody have anything further, Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, so I, I'm consistent with what I said before, I do think we should do it differently, but given the fact that it is what it is, I just think we need to articulate for us so that we are prepared, what is going to happen on the first day, so if the first day is all schools, so be it, just make sure that everyone knows, and myself included, so that I'm not studying something for the next night, you know, I think transparently we should get that done. There is going to be some questions, we, we just got this. So I had some questions today, but I will have more, you know, questions related to the budget, but the things that we've said today, if they spur you all to get together and say, you know, somebody made a point, why is this, and things change, just like you're asking us to respond to you, I'm asking you to take some of the feedback, respond to us, so that over the next two weeks, we're not just sitting here waiting.
Right.
Because I, for one, I'm not going to be a happy camper, when, if I've asked for five different things, and on the 18th comes, I just get radio silence because it doesn't want to be addressed, that's not going to be a great conversation. So all I'm asking is that this is a two-way street, if we have to tell you, please let us know as we bring things up, so that we can collaboratively go back and forth. The contract, for instance, is one, I raised some concerns about that today, so I would expect that between now and the next couple of days, we're going to get a response to all those questions. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further to come tonight?
Quick question.
Mr. Dias has one more question.
So we, so I'm going to go through this budget tonight, and if I have questions, should I just submit it through the form?
Yes, I think that works. Mr. Dias just asked if he could submit questions through the form, I think that makes sense. In my mind, I was thinking, oh, maybe I'll create something, but we do have a mechanism already, and I think that works.
Thank you, and it's a great form, I like, glad we implemented that idea, I yield.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Anybody, anything further that come before the committee, Deb, call them all, please.
Ms. Draguia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larabee?
Yes.
Ms. Carrera?
Yes.
Mary Cugan?